Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Vineland Board of Education combined meeting, August 5th, 2020 with a 5:00 p.m. start. Roll call, please. Mr. Merkley.
Mr. Costa.
Here.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Present.
Mr. Fioki.
Here.
Mr. Holmes. He's here. He's muted. Mr. Sabrana. He's here. He's muted. Mr. Silva? He's here. He's muted. Let me unmute these individuals while I'm going through this. Ms. Spinelli. She's here and muted. Mr. Ulrich.
Present.
Mr. English.
Here.
I believe I have everyone unmuted. Let me unmute Mr. Silva unless he wants to be muted. Peter, we have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Merkley. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time and place thereof, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, the Press of Atlantic City, Nuestra Comunidad, Vista Bueno, the Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, I ask that everyone please rises for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the United States of America.
To the Republic.
To the stand.
On the nation.
Under thy. Divisible. Liberated.
Justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Merkley, do we have a resolution for executive session this evening?
Yes, we do. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the City of Vineland School District will convene into executive session for the following reasons. It says outlined under NJSA 10:4-12. The purpose of the discussion is employee-related litigation and contract matters. Additionally, any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical duty as lawyer.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please. Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Yes.
Mr. Fioki.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes. You have him here.
They lost him.
I don't see him.
Yeah, I don't see him either.
Off the call.
I don't see him in the waiting room either. Okay. Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Spinelli.
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich.
Yes.
Mr. English.
Yes. For the record, let it be noted that Mr. Holmes left the meeting, but if we can get him back. And what I'd like to do now at this time, if you can get us put into the executive session format, that would be greatly appreciated because we're heading there now.
Okay, welcome back to our combined meeting, August 5th, 2020, with a 5:00 start. At this time, Dr. Grucci, do we have any special presentations?
No, not this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the approval of minutes? June 9th, 2020, executive session. June 29th, 2020, special meeting. July 1st, 2020, combined meeting.
So moved.
Roll call, please. Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Yes.
Mr. Fioki.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Spinelli.
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich.
Yes.
Mr. English.
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you. At this time, do you have any committee reports by our committee chairs? I see Mr. Fioki with his hand up. Please.
Yes, sir. On July 29th, at 8:30, the Finance Committee met. In attendance was Dr. Gruccio, Mr. Merkley, Mr. Musserell, Mr. Ulrich, and myself. We discussed compliance with Alyssa Law, which is a proposed plan for panic buttons, new burglar alarms, and access control panels in each school. We discussed the CARES grant, how much money was received, and what we use that money for, mainly PPE and student technology. Next, we discussed the Accounts Payable Department, lack of employees due to COVID, and we've had out-of-title employees working to complete some of these tasks. So we discussed providing temporarily stipend for accounts payable employees working out of title. Lastly, we discussed the professional disinfecting services that we will vote on later tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Fioki. Do we have anyone else? Ms. Spinelli.
The Facilities Committee met on July 29th at 4:00. In the meeting was Dr. Gruccio, myself, Ms. Cottisbody, Mr. Fioki, Mr. Merkley, and Mr. Fornaccio. We talked about the school readiness plan. We talked about the personal protective equipment that would be offered, the engineering control filter, so air filter changes to make more outdoor air come into the buildings. We talked about all the cleaning chemicals that will be used to keep our buildings clean. We talked about cleaning equipment. New equipment was purchased for this disinfectment. We talked about different chemicals that are on the agenda that will be voted on tonight, and we talked about the signage that's needed for the New Jersey DOE guidelines.
Do you... Okay, do we have anyone else?
Yes, Scott.
Yes, yes. Mr. Ulrich.
The Policy and Personnel Committee met via Zoom meeting on July 28th. Present was Dr. Gruccio, Dr. Rossi, Dr. Sneeden, Mr. Holmes, Mr. English, Ms. Spinelli, and myself, obviously. The committee reviewed the Recovery Restart Policy Plan proposal. A request was made to add a section addressing all virtual learning option under schedules, which is being put up for adoption tonight by Dr. Sneeden. Discussion included the committee's desire regarding a forthcoming policy that we engage a digital learning system policy that would govern teachers' responsibilities in the Google Classroom, or it probably would be Google Classroom or whatever the district sees fit. But we felt that we need to engage with our VEA representatives as soon as practical so that we can get that policy rolling. So I would expect the Board would be able to see that soon, and it would involve some mandates, obviously. We discussed some pending personnel litigation, some daily rate increases, which are on your agenda tonight for substitutes. The idea behind that was to make us really to be the choice and be the highest-paid district in our area to try to encourage substitutes to come to our district, make a little bit money. We know we're going to need a lot of substitutes because of the pandemic situation. The hiring of fall coaches and extracurricular club advisors. And that's about a wrap on the Policy and Personnel Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ulrich. I saw Mr. Holmes had his hand up. So, Mr. Holmes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. English. Transportation met Thursday, July 30th, 4:00 p.m. Present were Mr. Merkley, Dr. Gruccio, Tari Ferrari, Mike Hall, Mr. English, Ms. Cottisbody, myself, and Ms. Costa. We discussed cleaning protocols for school buses, driver communication, the routing for Vineland private schools and charter schools, and how the expectations of their students, social distancing on the buses, mask on the buses, and hand sanitizer on the buses. We discussed the successful implementation of online registration. We also discussed that new school buses have been ordered, and the expected delivery is August. And our bus depot is looking great coming along, and we're on schedule. And that's all for transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. And Ms. Costa, I saw your hand up as well.
The Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee meeting was held on July 20th. In attendance was Mr. English, Mr. Silva, Mr. Sabrana, and Mr. Fry. We discussed instruction for the 2020 school year. We discussed the... Had an overview of the remediation plan for all students. We also discussed a sample hybrid instruction model that the district plans to pursue. With respect to the remediation plans, that's primarily going to take place in the areas of mathematics and language arts. And we also talked about the virtual instruction guidelines. Teachers.
I apologize, Ms. Costa.
That's okay. We discussed continuing professional development for staff. In August and September, there's going to be e-learning, on-demand, and live streaming professional development to support our teachers. There's going to be district and service days at the beginning of the school year as well as during the school year. There's ongoing PDL, digital reinforcement. It has been offered to all staff that all staff can become Google-certified, and they'll be encouraged to do so. And continued safe school, on-demand training for required state mandates appropriate, so.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. And I just wanted to say to all the board members and the staff members, central administration as well, I know the times have been extremely crazy the last month and a half, and we put a lot of committee meetings together. Last week, we got a lot of things done. So for the people out there to think it's all coffee and bonbons, we definitely are working for the best interests of the students. So a special thank you to everyone who were involved in these committee meetings, week in and week out. Thank you again. At this time, do we have any reports from our Board Solicitor?
None.
Thank you, Mr. DeSanto. At this time, do I have a motion to suspend bylaw 0164 to provide for this meeting only, that the public comment on agenda items and any matter be limited to two minutes for each speaker?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Merkley.
I don't mute myself. Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Yes.
Mr. Fioki.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes. Yes. Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli.
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich.
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Just for the public to know, usually we do have five minutes. We allow a five-minute time spot. But from our last special meeting, we had many people speak, which we always encourage, and we do love to hear from the public. But it's important that the people that come up give other people a chance. So the goal here is to hopefully the people that speak get to the point, make their point, and try not to be redundant. So at this time, public comment on agenda items, and we will be limiting your comments to two minutes. Do we have anyone? Mr. Merkley?
The process for the public to alert me that you would like to speak is star nine on your phone. Please hit star nine. It will raise your hand so I understand that you would like to speak. Also, if you have YouTube running in the background, please mute that because that'll come through as a feedback. So anyone from the public who would like to speak, please press star nine. I do have one. I'm going to recognize the person that their phone number ends in 139. 139, you are unmuted. You may address the Board.
Hi, everybody. This is Megan Greenfield again. I am a teacher in Vineland, but I'm also... I live in Vineland, so I am a taxpayer, and I'm also a parent. So hear me out, not just as a teacher, please. And I'll be short this time. I won't go over a minute. I'll be 30 seconds. I just basically want to call and ask all of you a simple question. It's rhetorical, obviously, because I know you can't have dialogue back and forth, but I just want you to answer this question in your mind, and then I'm just going to end it there. This question is a question that many people have been asking, not just teachers, but parents, community members, and people from all over New Jersey for that matter. So this is not just teachers. This is a group of important stakeholders. So here it is. Why, if you are willing to send teachers, staff, and students into buildings in September, but you can't, as a board, meet in person together, why is that? And just so you know, you guys should know, everyone should understand that you're under the 25-person limit, like the governor has stated, and you can still livestream to the public. So that's not an issue with the public being able to come in. It would really show that you are practicing what you are preaching, and that you are willing to do what you're asking all of the district to do. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Hold on, Mr. Merkley. Just for the record, if everyone took the time to take a look at the agenda, live meetings will be discussed tonight. So I hope we have no more phone calls like that one. Thank you.
Thank you. I concur.
Okay, I do have a member of the public with their hand up. Again, the standard, I believe, is two minutes per speaker. Please mute your YouTube feed. And for those members of the public who wish to address the Board, please hit star nine on your telephone. I'm going to unmute Speaker 775. 775, you're unmuted. You can address the Board.
Hi, this is Blake Peskator. I was a student at the Vineland Public School System, all the way from kindergarten to 12th grade. I'm still a student, but I'm in law school now. And I just wanted to say that we really need to reassess Vineland Schools' relationship with the Vineland Police Department, and we need to reassess the amount of money we choose to spend on school resource officers. They're not privy to make schools safer, and studies show they make students of color feel less safe. So now, more than ever, we need to reassess the role of SROs in the school system because we know that racial inequality is a defining feature of the pandemic. Black and Latino people have been disproportionately affected by the coronavirus. They're three times more likely to get infected than their white counterparts. When school starts again, we're going to exacerbate these disparities and who's negatively affected by COVID if we do not actively consider and plan to fight the ways that systemic racism affects students' health and education. One way we can do that is to remove police presence from schools. Instead of investing in security guards that are trained to physically intervene and who disproportionately criminalize students of color, we can invest in educational tools and health resources, and thereby invest in students themselves. So despite the stark evidence that the coronavirus is going to disproportionately impact Black and Latino students, whether they are remote learning or returning to campus, and despite that the plan is almost 50 pages long, I read it, and I did not see any mention of the ways that Vineland plans to deal with these disparities. So I really hope that each of you is going to commit to addressing systemic racism in schools during the pandemic and for every semester after it. So I look forward to seeing how you plan to allocate funds and resources from resources that criminalize students of color to resources that are designed to promote their educational and health outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peskator.
Okay, the next person that has their hand up, please remember to please state your name, mute your YouTube feed, and keep your comments. The two minutes is guest 288. 288, you're unmuted. You can address the Board.
Yes, how are you doing today? My name is Luis Ramon Fines. I'm just calling to have a real quick question. I don't know if you guys kind of this or not. I just wanted to know, would the screening of the children that ride the school buses, when would that be reformed? Would that be performed either at the bus stop or at the actual school location itself? That's my one and only question.
Okay, we don't exchange back and forth in dialogue. So Dr. Gruccio is making notes, and part of her plan is out there, so you can review that plan as well.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a member of the public, 639. 639, you're unmuted. You can address the Board.
Hi, my name is Judy Morales. I have my two kids going to elementary, I guess, grades this year, and I would like to know if you guys are considering to kind of like provide the curriculum to the parents. I mean, it doesn't have to be specific, but I would like to be... I would like to be informed. You know, I'm very involved with my kids, so that way they can be... Or I can try to support, you know, I guess, the teachers on what they say that they need to know on their current grade. So I don't know. Like, I have asked that to one of the teachers, and I know at one point I asked last year, at the beginning of this year, if I could be provided the curriculum, because I know, you know, you guys tried to feed as much as you can, but you couldn't. So I just wanted to get like maybe some other books to support my kids, or, you know, just to know. Just one thing, I didn't get my education here. So, and that's what I, you know, I'm not sure. I think things have changed so much that, I mean, I would like you to consider to give like maybe a high-level curriculum to the parents, so then we are informed of what our kids need to know this year, so then we can kind of like support our kids and, you know, obviously the teachers. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a member of the public, their last three digits of their phone number end in 626. 626, you are unmuted. You can address the Board.
Hi, my name is Nicole Schaefer. I was calling because I have four kids in the Vineland Public Schools. I have one in high school and three in middle school. Woo-hoo! This is... Yes. I have the three in... The three in middle school. I was calling because of last year, they were doing remote learning, which is no problem. However, I have two that have ADHD and one that just got diagnosed. And the ones that have ADHD was trying to get help from their teacher. However, their teacher would not respond back until three, four, or five days later after the assignment was already due. And I was wondering, what are you going to do to fix that? Because as of right now, I feel like I am forced to send my kids back to school.
Again, we do not exchange in dialogue back and forth, but if you go on our district website, you can get Dr. Gruccio's email address, and you can email that concern question to her so she can respond accordingly, okay?
I have emailed. I emailed the principal last year. I emailed their guidance counselor, and nobody was willing to help with anything.
Dr. Gruccio duly noted? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. This might have been the same person. Person with the hand up is 639. I kind of think that was the same person we just had. 639, you're unmuted. You may address the Board.
One last question. Yes, you did give me the chance to ask my question. Like I said, I have two kids that go to the elementary school. Are you guys planning to send the siblings on the same day if, you know, because I'm going to send my kids to school? Are you guys going to kind of like coordinate brothers or, you know, brothers or sisters to go on the same day? That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Merkley, I just say again, can everyone hear me in the public if I say something? I want everyone to understand again that this is not a question-and-answer session. This is strictly a chance for the public to have conversation with the Board so we hear things. Dr. Gruccio takes our notes, and everyone has the ability to go online and get Dr. Gruccio's email address, mgruccio@vineland.org, and you can email your questions for a follow-up if you do not hear something, because we're hearing your names, but at that point, we don't have your contact numbers or anything like that. So please don't think we are blowing you off by not answering your questions, but it's our format we use. Thank you.
Okay, for any member of the public that wishes to address the Board, please hit star nine on your telephone. Star nine. Right now, there is no hands up.
Alrighty then.
There's a hand that just went up. Maybe they didn't realize how to do it. I'm also logging in. That kind of hand was already up. 288, 288, you're unmuted. You can address the Board.
Yes, how are you doing? I just have one more quick question. I'm sorry. My name's Luis Ramon Fines. I just wanted to know where exactly on the Board website would... Actually, look for the plan that you guys have in place that I've written, so I can actually read it over. I'm on the website now. I'm just trying to figure out exactly where it's located.
We are voting on the plan this evening, so
Oh, okay, okay.
Once it's voted on, it will be on the website, okay?
On the Vineland Public School website?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank... I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Merkley, do we have anyone else this evening?
I don't see anyone now.
Okay, at this time, we are on number 11, motions and resolutions by our superintendent. Dr. Gruccio, please.
You unmuted, Jean?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Just for the public also, what I had tried to say earlier, Scott, was they're more than welcome to call or email my office, and we will get back to anybody who has a question.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio.
All right. All right. Under Personnel, I would like to recommend discussion of retirements, resignations, terminations, leaves of absence, employment, transfers, students, substitutes, extracurricular activities, extracurricular summer, and volunteers.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend approval of the same items that I just read.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Merkley.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Yes.
Mr. Fioki.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes. Yeah, he thumbs up. Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli.
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich.
Yes.
Mr. English.
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you.
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the following daily pay rates, which would become effective September 1st. Substitute long-term teachers would go from 125 to 150. Building permanent subs would go from 125 to 150. Daily substitute teachers would go from 110 to 125. Substitute long-term paraprofessionals from 90 to 100. Daily paraprofessionals from 80 to 90. Substitute custodian from 11 to 1350. New Jersey minimum wage rises $12 per hour, which would be effective January 1st.
Any questions or comments? Just a quick comment for the people in the public out there, as well as the Board themselves. I mean, this we're trying to do is to attract substitutes because we're fearing the worst comes September. So I encourage everyone to reach out and let, you know, the fellow people they know about these increases, because I think this was a great idea, and I'm glad we put this forward. So I appreciate that.
Mr. English, at this point in time, I know it's premature and early. 115 staff members have opted out of in-person instruction, in-person support.
Thank you. That's district-wide, I mean.
Yes, sir. I would give you comment that it's a fluid situation.
I appreciate the honesty. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Merkley.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Yes.
Mr. Fioki.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli.
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich.
Yes.
Mr. English.
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you.
I'd like to recommend discussion regarding the proposed plan to reopen schools September 2020.
Questions or comments? Just a quick comment. Dr. Gruccio, I know our last meeting, a lot of people tuning in, and they were looking, their vibe they got was the Board versus Dr. Gruccio, but it's not that way. It's a common respect. It's a common respect we share for each other, and I want to let you know and the staff know that I appreciate the time that went into working on the second plan, because that is something that the board was looking more towards. So I do appreciate that, and I wanted that to be said publicly. So thank you for your time and effort, and everyone who was involved in that.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend discussion for the board to waive the time requirements for review according to Policy 0131, Bylaws and Policies, and to adopt the following policy. Policy 1648 Restart and Recovery Plan, Policy 1648.2, Remote Learning Options for Families.
Any questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding authorizing the Board Secretary to enter into an affiliation agreement for the 2021 school year for the placement of students for field internships, student teaching, practicum, and observations with Capella University.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding authorizing the Board Secretary to enter into an affiliation agreement for the 2021 school year for the placement of students for internship, student teaching, practicum, and observations with Grand Canyon University.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend approval of Items 2.1 through 2.4.
Do I have a motion?
No, moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Merkley.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
That motion, those motions pass.
Thank you.
I would like to recommend discussion of budgetary transfers for our general school based in ECPA budgets for the month of June 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of the Board Secretary and Treasurer reports for the month of June 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the submission of the following grant applications. Fiscal Year 2021 Individuals' Disabilities Education Act application to the State of New Jersey, July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. The basic allocation is $3,016,982, with a preschool allocation of $94,421.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend discussion regarding the Fiscal Year 2021 Elementary and Secondary Act, Education Act, excuse me, application to the State and New Jersey Department of Ed from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. It's broken down by all title categories. Title 1A, $3,618,918. Title 1 reallocated, $231,089. Title 1 SIA Part A, $503,000. Title 2A, $561,779. Title 3, $169,346. Title 3 Immigrant, $13,453. And Title 4 Part A, $99,009.
Questions or comments?
Would like to recommend discussion regarding the Lissa Law Grant Submission to the Department of Ed in the amount $527,555 for meeting school building compliance requirements for notification of law enforcement. The grant includes law enforcement notification, new burglar alarm, and access control systems for all of our schools.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion to accept the following funding. The State and New Jersey Department of Children and Families, the Family Friendly Center Grant, which will be for Sabatier Elementary School in the amount of $45,463.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the established petty cash and change funds for the 2021 fiscal year per the list provided and on file with the Board Secretary.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the submission and acceptance of a no-cost extension for the continued implementation of the Fiscal Year 19 NJYC RISE New Jersey Youth Corps Department of Labor Workforce Development through the Vine and Public Schools Grant Funding Program through September 30, 2020, as provided and on file with the Secretary of the Board.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a requisition to the City of Veyland for the 2021 local school taxes according to the schedule provided and on file with the Board Secretary. This will meet the requirement by the state auditors for requisition of local district taxes for school purposes.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the following fiscal year 21 Equalization Aid Reduction of $858,773, and an increase in school choice aid of $546, for a total budget reduction of $858,227 due to New Jersey reducing state aid in the accounts listed below.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the renewal of the commercial inland marine policies with Liberty Mutual, West American, through Beyond the Insurance Company, with total premiums of $27,970.81, which will be effective July 26, 2020 through July 26, 2021. This will cover commercial property, terrorism, and New Jersey Quarantine Fund.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the renewal of three-student accident policies with NJSIG through Beyond the Insurance, with total premiums of $91,000, excuse me, $273.80, which will be effective September 1 through August 31, 2021.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a resolution that awards contracts to the childcare providers and paid by ECPA funding in accordance with the list on file of the Board Secretary for the 2021 school year, in accordance with a form of contract that is approved by the Department of Education.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the contract for in-school one-on-one nursing services with Biata Home Healthcare, Inc., in the amount of $50 per hour for RN and $41 per hour for an LPN from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the contract for in-school nursing services with Biata Home Healthcare, Inc., in the amount of $50 per hour for an RN, $41 an hour for an LPN from July 1 through June 30, 2021.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a professional services renewal contract to Inspira Healthcare Occupational Health Services, Dr. Balgun, for medical screening services at an increased rate for July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. It's listed student drug and alcohol physical screenings. The amounts are listed CDL operator and alcohol screenings, and CDL operator urine and drug screenings.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the following renewal contract for digital assessment and data analysis, DBA Linkit, for the term July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, for the amount of $79,794.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding awarding the following contract for before and after-school program, RFP number 07 for the 2021 school year for the term of August 6, 2020 to June 30, 2021, with an option to renew two one-year terms or one two-year term for a maximum of three years.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding an addendum to the July 1, 2020 renewal of the following contractor, the same term for one year, starting July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. This is for maintenance and supportive district IT services, and the contract is pro computer service.
Questions, Scott?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Alt.
And I guess it would be probably more for Mr. Frye. But when I looked at that, it's not really broken down, like, the actual labor cost for technicians versus a senior technician that kind of seems like a network, assistant network administrator. What redundancy do we have in district? I know we have a system administrator, but what redundancy behind him do we have? Or are we totally relying on this outsourcing third party?
Great question. Now, that's part of a redundancy plan is with PCS, but you also have Catherine Rivera and myself, who have access to all the vendors, all the components of our entire network. So if anything happened to any one of the three of us, myself, Catherine, Jason, either of the other of us will take, pick up the ball and run with it.
Okay, and that's great. Do we, like, wouldn't it be better to actually have an IT professional in the district that can be a direct backup to Jason? Because what I'm, what I'm getting at is we're spending probably close to a half a million dollars on this outsourcing, and I'm just worried that if something were to happen to Jason, we lose our system administrator, and then we're totally relying on an outsource, even though you say that you and Catherine and stuff, but you're not an IT professional. So like, have we really looked at that? Are we cutting it too thin in the IT department? I think I lost Nate.
Yeah, I think Nathan has a bad connection. He's been coming in and out. So he's coming in again right now. If you want to give him a minute to establish the connection.
Sure. Yeah, sure, you know.
Nathan, did you get to hear Mr. Ulrich's question? You're in and out. Can't hear him.
Muted, I guess.
No, he's got.
You know, the point, even if we hired somebody, like, I wonder what their billable, because it doesn't break it down. I wonder what their billable rate. And Mr. Silva might even, has his background in that. Are we really cutting it too thin, is my worry in our IT department?
I just, I just wondered also, too, if we have, I mean, the amount of computers we have in district, I mean, is like three or four people cutting it? Before, we had 14 techs. Before we out, so is four techs really cutting what we really need, or are they providing tech support?
Just from a layperson's point of view, Mr. Ulrich and Mr. Silva, the service is outstanding, and it's improved 1,000%. Maybe I'll say this regrettably as the Personnel Director, since we went away from the staff we had and went to a contractor.
And that's fine, Joe. I understand that. But I guess my direct question, again, points back to Nathan, is I'm talking about a backup to Jason that is an IT-certified Microsoft engineer, whatever it is, that actually, would it be worthwhile having that in? So we have redundancy, professional redundancy within our staff, and not be locked into a provider that, they kind of have us by the, you know, they can call their own shots.
No, we're not locked into the provider all the time, not, not, we moved away from that model years ago, that no one person is, I'm out again. Am I any good?
We can hear.
You're buffering.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we just got power back a little bit. There we go. We've been out of power for two days. So the Comcast is still not back completely yet. So how am I doing?
Nate, if you can hear me.
We do hear you.
What I was saying is, okay, we're spending a half a million dollars to this outside. Joe says we're getting, from his perspective, good service. Alex noted that those four techs really cut it for district with, now that we have 10,000, every student has to have a Chromebook or an Apple product, we got 10,000 devices out there, right? Potentially, or even more. That doesn't include desktops. So should we have a backup to Jason that is a certified engineer, has all the credentialed certifications, and would that be a worthwhile investment? Looking towards the future and looking how important our IT services are?
The IT services are one of the most important pieces of our instructional plan. We take it extremely seriously, and there is a backup plan to Jason. We moved away from in-house, localized bottlenecks, I guess is the best way to say it. So if anything happens to any one of our systems, myself, Catherine Rivera, are 100% able to call these individual vendors, not PCS, the people who run all of our hosted components, and maintain that connectivity. That's one of the reasons why we had such success recently. Our data is outstanding. The ticket system is working incredibly well. From 14 to five guys shows you what a reconfiguration can do with, you hear me say a lot of times that you don't really do more or less, but this is the case by restructuring and re-analyzing what you have and where you need to put your emphasis on. It has worked extremely well, and the proof is in the data. If anything ever happens that we need to make adjustments to, we make those adjustments. PCS, for example, when we have large components of computers come in, like, we're getting ready to have them come right now, PCS is all hands on deck. They bring in extra people to get those things happening for us. So, yeah, it's been extremely successful, and there's a very robust succession plan. If anything does happen to Jason, you mean if he gets the flu or whatever happens, we are well-prepared for that. Jason does not like when I say hit by a bus, so I try to avoid that very carefully.
Well, no.
We talk about it, we talk about it a lot.
Jason's a very competent employee. I mean, that's, my issue is, like, really trying to, you know, bolster the fact that whenever you rely on one person, that's your IT professional, you have a point of failure potential. And the idea is to do risk mitigation, look at the possible points of failure in any system that we have. And we're spending a lot of money. I'm just wondering, having all your eggs in one basket and having one person, and I don't want to, that's an IT professional. I'm not talking about people that can make phone calls and call providers. That's actually an IT professional. That's all. And it's something that we can, I would request Dr. Gruccio to send that to Finance Committee and Policy and Personnel for a broader discussion.
Agreed.
Thank you, Nate.
You're welcome.
I was wondering, your picture is not moving. You're like, there's nowhere that could sit that still.
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the submission of the fiscal year 21, closing the digital divide, a competitive discretionary grant in the amount of $2,069,749, according to the grant guidelines.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the tuition contract between the City of Veyland Board of Ed and Westfield Board of Ed for one student in the total amount of $10,968.36 at $61.62 per day, times 178 days.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the 2021 itinerant shared service agreement between Burlington County Special Services School District and the Vine and Public School District for July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the sales of the vehicle list, which are on file with the Board Secretary, to be auctioned on GovDeals.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the following Cumberland County Regional Cooperative Transportation Initiatives, the 2021 ESY quoted contracts.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend approval of Items 4.1 through 4.23.
Do I have a motion?
No, moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki? He's muted. Hands up. Mr. Holmes?
Yes to all, no to 4.18.
Noted. Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
I'm gonna go yes to all and no to 4.18.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Those motions pass.
Mr. Fioki has his hand up again.
I forgot. I need, I need to abstain from 4.18. But yes to everything else, sorry.
Noted. The motions still pass. Noted. The motions still pass.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. At this time under 11B, proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by board members. I would like to start with number one, discussion regarding the returning to in-person board meetings. Before we start the discussion, I would just ask Mr. DeSanto, just to give us what the governor's most recent take on, we, we had, when we originally discussed putting this on our agenda, it was clear how we could go about doing it. And then it's changed in a matter of a few days. So if you can just brief the board on where we currently stand with that.
Central office, and correct me if my information is not to date. But when we first started to discuss this, the ability to have public members in the building was at that point a, a maximum of 25% of capacity or 100 people. The governor, I believe, recently has indicated that regardless of the capacity, it could be no more than 25 people in the closed building. A number of boards and municipalities have conducted meetings in a hybrid kind of way where the board or the council has the council members and their administrators in the building with the public participating via remote. Obviously, all the public member, I'm sorry, all the, the board members or council members and administration must maintain social distancing, the masks, et cetera. All the protocols must be in place for those people in the building. So Mr. English, the most significant change now is if the board were to consider this, you're talking about no more than 25 people in the room at one time. That's the maximum that's allowed.
So currently, as I'm looking at the screen, if I did my math correctly, five times three is 15, correct, Mr. Merkley? Appreciate that. I'm taking that as a yes. Then we would have to get some security. We would have to get the, the people that would be doing the videotaping. So we would, we would be getting pretty close to that 25 number, if not over that number. So when we had thought the 100 was the perfect thing, we, 100 people being in the building, we said, okay, we could do that with no problem. Then the logistics of how do we set up a room and which room that would be becomes a would-if type thing. We currently have today's meeting and then we have a meeting scheduled for the 26th of August. School starts in September. When it comes to meetings, do you believe that the Landis building comes schools, the start of school, that, that 25 will be relaxed, Bob, or?
There's no way, there's no way of knowing, Scott.
Okay.
No, it could be shut down completely in a week. So right now you have to deal with 25. And if you're considering, for example, the auditorium at Landis, you have to figure out how you're going to adjust nine board members, Dr. Gruccio and Mr. Merkley, for example, exclude me for the moment. You have to have nine members. If you're going to keep them on stage, for whatever reason, then logistically, you've got to keep them six feet apart, et cetera.
So members of the public had a logistic or legitimate gripe when they, they said, well, how can we do this, that, or that? And they can't even get in a building. Well, unfortunately, we do not make the rules. If I made the rules, I would have the Landis administration building full this evening. We would practice our social distancing and we would do what I believe is needed to conduct a in-person board meeting. Unfortunately, our, our governor seems to, you've heard me say it once, I'll say it till I'm probably blue in the face. It is one hell of a roller coaster ride that we continue to ride here in the Vinon Public School District. And it's not only us, it's every school district. But I can tell you, each one of my board members have been asking, can we meet in a public setting? But my fear always is, when they do it, is, is it to stifle the complaints we're getting by people in the public? Or is it to meet publicly? When we sit down and do the logistics of it, I just haven't had a way to make that happen. So you also have to think, when we have our board meetings, there's 15 of us here. We're going to need that staff member. But then we, we have Ms. Ferrari, Mr. Hall, Mr. Provenzano, Mr. Faranaccio, Mr. Salerno, Ms. Godluski. So you know, already I'm starting to add to that list. So under the current guidelines that have been put in place by the governor of the state of New Jersey, I didn't think it's possible to do that. So that's where I currently stand with that. I know I tend to speak on behalf of the board, but each one of you has reached out to me. So do you have anything to add to that since the latest 25 max governor's decision?
Scott, I do, I do have a comment.
Yes.
You know, I, I think it was an unfair comment levied at the board, because right now, the teachers aren't in the buildings. Essential personnel, security, janitorial are, right? Because essential personnel are exempted. But I, I know when you called me, and I can always speak for myself, I said, yes, I want the public and the staff to go through the same process that every one of us would expect of a teacher. So that point is totally correct. Me, being a compromised immune person, everybody knows it. I didn't wear a mask outside when I did the high school graduation. I don't live my life in fear. I try to mitigate the risk. Outside is always better, right? But inside, logistically, that small room, the board conference room, I don't even see how it's even possible to social distance on that. The land of stage is not possible to be six feet apart. If you look at any of the conferences that are up there, including Murphy's, you know, there's like three people, there's, you know, the health person, the state police person, and they're on a big venue. So we'd have to rethink how we did that. But me personally, I am for as soon as possible returning to that.
Thank you, Mr. Alwitsch. And like I said, come the start of school, I believe, I want to say it's like all gloves off. Because if our schools are open, I, I don't understand why we wouldn't be able to do something unless the governor pumped the brakes on that as well. You know, it's, it's not a school board decision when these rules come down the pike. So I would hope that the public is taking that energy that they continue to post on social media sites and possibly are delivering it to a direct call to the governor's office. Because again, I'll, I'll be your punching bag. I have no problem with that. But I do have a problem with not understanding, doing your homework and knowing the facts. That's pretty much it. Do we have anyone else with any comments?
Could I just add something quickly, Mr. English?
Yes, sir.
On behalf of staffing, I won't speak for Mr. Faranaccio. He can certainly do that himself. Veteran board members will know that probably no department has taken the brunt of budget cuts more than facilities. With Mr. Weaver was here and now Mr. Faranaccio. One of the goals we had in Landis was to allow him to use his resources in the schools to prepare for the school year for the children, minimal need here. So if you're looking for factors and Mr. Alwitsch addressed some of that, one of the factors at Landis is if we minimize the need for facilities workers here, he can disperse a limited crew into the building.
Okay. Thank you. Now, Mr. Sabrana?
I, I have a question for Bob. When you say 25 people, is that 25 people in the building? Or 25 people in a, in a room, you know, supposedly for a meeting?
It's 25 people in the forum. I mean, in turn, you know, if you have an open room where you have the, the people, then that is my understanding of how you count 25. So for example, we have an auditorium. 25 people in the auditorium socially distanced. It doesn't, you can't have a security guard, at least I understand, it may be central office, this is different on this. That doesn't mean you, you count the security guard that's out at the front door.
So we could have the 15 people here are socially distanced in the gym, for example. And the other people who usually attend the building or attend the meeting in the auditorium or in the, some other place and observing the meeting that's being videotaped. Something like that.
The central office has been on this particular issue every day. Does anyone from central office have a clearer understanding of how the 25 is calculated?
We were told 25 people total, including everyone. Like, I think we'd be 25 if we included the security guard, Demarco, our people in the front and the people on the stage. But those 25 would have to be socially distanced. So, you know, I, I don't know how to answer the part versus if you split up in different rooms. But to hold a meeting in one location, it includes everyone involved and cannot exceed 25. The camera crew, you know, all of them.
I can only speak for myself as a mature gentleman with some past health issues. I, I'm not afraid to go to a meeting if the usual precautions are taken. And I, I want to do that as soon as possible. I don't, I don't particularly enjoy this format. I would rather be, not necessarily face to face, but in the same room with my colleagues and with the administration.
So again, doing the, the simple math again, when we go 25 people times six foot apart, I don't know that Ms. Masur has a wide enough camera lens angle to incorporate us all into a meeting when we can have a Zoom meeting where the public can see each one of us and engage in conversation. I mean, I'm not sure microphone wise, you know, there's a lot that would go into trying to make this happen. But again, I'm looking at the 26th of August, school's a week from opening. I don't want to have our September meeting to be a sight to see. So I would much rather try a dry run publicly on the 26th. If indeed it has to be a social distance type thing and see how much of a nightmare it would be. I mean, the, the public will get back to us rather quick, I'm sure, and say, okay, we didn't hear one thing I said, or we didn't even see this one. So I'm definitely gearing towards something on the 26th, which gives everyone ample time to find the best room in the building. As Mr. Sabrana said, maybe the, the gymnasium, I think he said, or someone said.
Gymnasium as the meeting room with the other ancillary folks in, in another room, either in the auditorium or in the hallway or somewhere like that.
Which is great, but then you're pretty much back to Zoom again, almost in a virtual sense.
Couple of comments I have quickly. Yes, I'm very uncomfortable going back. I have no problem going back, which I've expressed, you know, long as we can figure out the logistics. True concern, one, could we do audio only? Do we need video? Two, we need to figure out if we have to have executive session where we can do that. You know, public's there, if we got to kick them out, we obviously can't meet in our normal room for that. So just something to think of. But if we could do audio only, it would make the video issue easier. Something to think of.
Thank you. Ms. Cottisbody?
Yeah, I'm all for going back all together in one location as soon as we can. But I do know, you know, it's going to be tough logistically to do that. I am also autoimmune compromised, but I am not afraid to go back. I was elected to do this and I would, sometimes it's hard to be in a Zoom meeting. But I understand that sometimes this is the only way we can do it. But I would like to see us go back as soon as possible. And I too would like to see if we could get the answer to what Mr. Sabrana said about, is it 25 in the building? Or is it 25 in a room? Or, you know, maybe we could have some of the administrator in a different room. I don't know how we could do it, but I'm just trying to think of, you know, just different things. But I would like to go back.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Okay. Paragraph one of the executive order in question says that, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that the maximum number of individuals at indoor gatherings, et cetera, shall be limited to 25% of the capacity of the room in which it takes place. But regardless of the capacity of the room, like I mentioned earlier, such limit shall never be larger than 25 persons.
Okay.
Okay. If, if, if I'm reading this correctly, that's the August 3 order, I guess Monday's order, was it? Monday's order, 173 for your reference, anybody, any board member, executive order 173, so.
Now, now, correct me if I'm wrong in the.
You know, the, the idea is that if, if you have somebody else in a separate room, separated by walls of 300 feet away, then that's not a social distancing concern, you know? But if somebody's in the room where there's no walls, like the auditorium, then it's 25 persons, as I see it, in that room.
Mr. Alwitsch, you might be able to answer this better than me, but I, I seem to remember something about if you wear a mask, all rules are off. What do we got if we wear masks? Do we have to be six foot apart?
No, I, I, I agree with Bob on that. The new executive order is limiting strictly 25. The, the mask option being six feet apart, I mean, you know, that's the minimum CDC requirements. I still think that probably it would be prudent if we're six feet apart, that when we're not speaking, we wear a mask just to go that extra step, because teachers are required to wear a mask and go through a, a working day. So I think that we should set an example. And if we're asking staff and students to do this, I think that we can do it for two or three hours or an hour and a half, whatever it is. So we should do the same thing. That's only my opinion.
No, that's, again, this is why I wanted to have this on the agenda tonight, because if I'm understanding it correct, come September's, all rules are going to be a little bit different. And if, if I'm expecting my staff members and my students to be in our buildings, I damn well expect us to be business as usual as well. So it's pretty much where I'm at with that. So I mean, I, I, I do, I do want to try a dry run for the 26th, because any, any speed bumps we hit, we should be able to iron out. Is that the right choice we made being in the cafeteria, being in the gymnasium? Acoustically, how does it really sound? We struggle sometimes when we're in the actual auditorium, for God's sakes, with normal setting. Now we're going to be masked. And that's more Mr. Sabrana's area. I, I mean, I don't, I don't want to sit there and not understand a word that was just said. And then we have public comment. How do you really address public comment then? Will we even hear it? You know, a lot of things that we're going to have to put in place. So it's here. So the 26th is, we'll be here before you know it. So that's going to be my goal. So I want central administration to know it. And I know Gia's out there, Gia to know it. So that is what I believe the majority of the board is wanting as well. Does anyone have anything else to add to that? Mr. DeSanto?
Mr. English, I just wanted to mention, I was recently at a board meeting of one of the civil boards that I'm involved with, as is Mr. Holmes. And we attempted in an all-purpose room to do social distancing with masks. And almost everyone to a T had indicated how difficult it was to hear each other speak and how difficult it was to hear the chair speak and the auditors who were there at that particular time. So this dry run may very well be helpful so that we could see any of the difficulties involved. But keeping in mind, you can do a hybrid in terms of having the essential people, the 15 or so and, and other administrators. But, you know, all public comment would, would be, you know, via, via Zoom. And then, of course, you'd have to, it's much easier for us to hear public comment on, on a Zoom. But now if we're in there, how are you going to hear it with microphones and speakers and all of that? Gene, I guess, you know, you could address that.
Well, Bob, I, I wasn't saying that when you're speaking, you'd be a mask, because we'd have to socially distance. I would not attend a meeting in person that wasn't socially distanced, because that's what the requirement is in school, right? So when I, if I was addressing the. the requirement is in school, right? So when I, if I was addressing the board, I would take my mask off, speak, because we're already socially distanced, and everybody else is protecting me, because they have their mask on. So that's the purpose of the mask, right? To protect everybody else. So I'm not spreading it. So I, you know, it's simple for me. If we have a room, we can do it, I'll do it. That's, that's my standpoint.
I've even looked at some hybrid things. We have that beautiful Gattone Stadium behind us. There's an outdoor venue that we have video screens on each side. We have a sound system. I can, I can have a full board meeting. If we had to do something outside, we have that advantage while it's still warm. Do I want to do that? Then you run into the weather permitting thing. But that is, that is also a hybrid way we can go about. I've been really thinking about different ways. And it's, and it was, it's more to get back to some normal things that the town and the state needs. That's all. I mean, what else can I really say about it, other than I'm not happy with the way things are, and our students need to be educated? We need to continue to conduct business and move forward. I mean, we might have a situation where there might be no school come September. But, you know, we'll deal with that when it happens. But as far as board meetings go, I'm ready for business as usual in a face to face type session within the guidelines that have been set forth by the governor. So I think we're all in agreement with that. It gives a couple of weeks to let Gia start kicking it around. And Mr. Merkley, Nate, I mean, it's not our first rodeo. So, man, we've, we've definitely done some bigger things. We've, we've tried to work on a way to make a graduation happen at Gattone. So I think, I'm confident. I mean, I, I think we can make it happen. So let's put that target date, like I said, the 26th, and move forward with that. Does anyone want to add anything to this discussion, or did we cover everything on that? Okay, seeing none. Now we will go to 11B, number two, motion to accept emails from Blake Pescator and Annalisa Chiro regarding police presence in the schools. I shared the emails that we received with each board member. Everyone received them a couple months, maybe a month, a week, or whenever, a month back. I, I know I sent them out there. We had a chance to review all that. If I can ask Dr. Gruccio where we currently stand, because this does fall under a lot of the day to day operation piece. I know that we, yes?
Yeah, excuse me. Yeah, Mr. English?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, under our bylaw 0164, whenever we get a request from the public such as this, it's the same thing as if someone came to the podium. But this particular, these emails requested that the board consider on the agenda this particular subject. I think it would be appropriate for the board to simply pass the motion, accepting the email, and for you as board president, to refer the matter to Administration, to Dr. Gruccio, and to the Safety Committee for review and any follow up. The board does not have to entertain this. If there's no recommendation by Central Office or the Safety Committee to have the board consider us, it doesn't come back to you. So all you really need to do is accept the communication and refer it to Dr. Gruccio and the Safety Committee for any review and follow up.
Okay, so. I appreciate that. At this time, do I have a motion to accept emails from Blake Pescator and Annalisa Chiro regarding the police presence in the schools?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Dr. Gruccio, I will be in contact with you concerning that, and then we can add this to our list of committee agendas, okay?
Yep, I'll try to set up that meeting. I'll coordinate with Dr. Gruccio, get a Safety Committee meeting in the near future.
Appreciate that. Mr. Ulrich and Mr. DeSanto, thank you for the clarification there. And to both of those ladies, I do thank you for sending that email to myself, and I forwarded on to the board accordingly. So appreciate your time with that. At this time, do I have a motion for the approval of bills that incurred during the month of June 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you, Mr. Merkley. At this time, we don't get this often, but number 13, we have emergent items with prior approval. Dr. Gruccio had a couple emergent items that she would like to put forward to the board. So at this time, I will turn that over to Dr. Gruccio.
Mr. Merkley will handle them because they're emergent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Merkley?
Item number 113, 131 is the approval regarding resolution of emergent need number one for the emergency award of thermal imaging scanning technology equipment in accordance with NJSA 18A 18A-7 and Governor Murphy's Executive Order 103 to DNS Solutions LLC of Vineland, New Jersey, in the amount of $180,000.
Do I have any questions or comments from board members?
Mr. President, I have a comment.
Yes.
I'm voting no on this, on procedural grounds, on this, this particular item. This is a $180,000 expenditure, and I only learned last night about its addition to the agenda as an emergent item. I emailed Dr. Gruccio my concerns this morning, based on some quick research about active versus passive temperature scanning, and all the myriad of issues and problems that both of them create. I did not receive a reply. The taxpayers have elected me three times to represent their interest in the appropriate expenditure of their hard earned money, especially in these times. All of us want safe schools. But before we move forward with this sort of initiative, I think we should explore some alternatives. I am confident that we could have received other presentations and still had enough time to put some equipment in place. That was the consensus of the board. Moving forward, this is the way I'm going to vote on any similar initiative for this board in this fashion. Thank you.
Mr. English?
Yes.
I, I have reservations when the government itself takes extraordinary measures to spend money to bypass purchasing procedures. And it causes me pause when I don't believe that we fully explored options that may or may not be cost prevented, or cost prohibitive, or maybe that's the best deal going. I am all for temperature scans. I have put that on the block since March. So you're not getting an argument out of me for that. But anytime a government body uses extraordinary measures to spend money, to make decisions out of the norm of the process, I just have issue with it. And the process, honestly, you can't get dumped something like this. And it's not just this, but it's the second resolution, and spend $400,000 at the blink of an eye and say it's CARES money, and it's from the federal government. And I just feel that as a steward of the taxpayers, it's my money. It's your money. It's each of our money, because anybody who pays federal taxes, we're paying for this CARES act. So I just, I have reservations about how this proceeded so quickly without information being shared with the body that is responsible for the budget of the Vineland Board of Education by law.
Thank you, Mr. Ulrich. Do I have any other comments by any board members? Dr. Gruccio, more of a question in a logistical type thing. If indeed, the scanning technology equipment does not pass this evening, what, what would the plans be for temperature scanning for the students?
The only plan we'd be able to do is taking each person's temperature with a handheld, which will require an enormous amount of time. We can attempt it, or we cannot take temperatures, either one.
Is it doable?
I do not believe it is doable, but I will certainly try it if that's what the board wants. I think it's a futile exercise. I think this equipment is equipment that will do the job and do it well, if we want our children scanned. If we do not, then, then I'm fine. We won't take temperatures. But we have worked very hard and done our due diligence. These companies have just come before us this past week. Nobody is trying to bypass the bid process or RFP process. Nobody is trying to bypass any board members. The minute we got the information, it was shared with the board. I believe it's an appropriate way to go, but that doesn't mean you do. So if the board doesn't want to do this, it's fine. We can either not take temps, or we can attempt to do it with handhelds. But it will definitely hold up the process of students entering school and being in their classrooms on time.
For the members of the public that might not be following the roller coaster decision making of our governor, where does he stand with temperature testing?
It is suggested, but the CDC said you do not have to do it. It is not a requirement.
It is not a requirement for school districts to temperature scan students and staff?
Based on the CDC requirements, that's correct.
Okay. Do I have any more questions or comments from the board? On number one, Gene, will you be putting this together for a dual vote, or is it one at a time?
I think you should take them one at a time.
One at a time?
Yeah.
All right, then. Do I have a motion to accept emergent item 131, approval regarding resolution of emergency award of thermal imaging scanning technology equipment?
Make a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
My vote is yes. I mean, I understand that we're talking about a significant amount of CARES Act money, but I think that it's certainly, under these very trying times, it's just an added layer of protection for both the staff members as well as the students. I know that at my own employment, where I go every day, temperature is taken up every individual. We have to stand six feet apart in a line and wait for each person to be screened. And it's a long tedious process. So I just feel that when we're talking about, you know, hundreds of students coming into the schools come September, it's going to be needed. I think it's necessary. So I'm voting yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
I have really mixed feelings about this. I understand Administration's part of it. I understand no part of it. I'm just not comfortable voting for something at $400,000 or $250,000 that I really don't know anything about. I definitely want our children's temperatures taken, as well as everybody else. But I just don't know enough about this equipment overnight to be confident to spend taxpayer money of almost $400,000. So I'm going to have to vote no.
Excuse me for interrupting, but I just want to make sure the mail is correct, and it's $180,000.
Okay, $180,000.
Right. I combined the two together, Mary, and said, I think that's where she got it from.
Yeah.
For a clarification, it reads approval regarding a resolution of emergent need number one for the emergency award of thermal imaging scanning technology equipment in accordance with the NJSA 18A: 18-A-7 and Governor Murphy's Executive Order Number 103 to DNS Solutions LLC of Vineland, New Jersey, in the amount of $180,000.
Okay, I'm still going to vote no. That's still $180,000 that I'm still not comfortable spending. I just don't know enough about it. So I'm going to vote no.
Thank you.
Mr. Fiocchi?
I have to abstain due to conflict. But that being said, I do think that we should be taking temperatures of staff and students on a daily basis. So my vote is to abstain.
Extension noted. Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
No.
Mr. Silva?
Voting yes. I think that temperature does need to be taken. I know it's a substantial amount of money, but I think this would definitely speed up the process, especially at the high school. You're scanning 1,200 students. Every other schools, you have 600 to 800 students. I definitely think that's something that is worth spending the money on.
Ms. Spinelli?
As a healthcare worker, I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
I'm going, well, you all know that I'm for temperature scanning. I do believe there's other alternatives, and that we didn't explore the other alternatives. I'm going to vote no. I just feel that this is a, it's wasting money that we may or may not need, but I don't know. I'm going to go no.
Mr. English?
I want to start by saying, these type of machines, we should have invested in months ago. Discussion should have been months ago. Mr. Ulrich pointed this out, and I get the taxpayers' money and everything as well. But now I have to go back to things like I'm saying concerning us a simple Vineland Board of Education meeting. How are we going to get that back to normal? I feel that this entire board, I sat in with the July 16th meeting with the mayor, with the Health Department, with all the other stakeholders. The discussion was pretty cut and dry that we wanted everyone to be temperature scanned. This type of equipment will get it done in a timely fashion. And I got to tell you, I'm really on the fence with this. But I also don't like excuses. And I imagine if this type of equipment is not put in place, we just opened the door for several excuses on why this one can't do this, or that person can't do that, or this student's that. So with severe reservation, I will be voting yes to this. And if I did my math correct, I believe that's five yes votes. Mr. Merkley?
That is correct.
I want to address one thing concerning the process. The word emergent, we understand what that means. And I just, I'm disappointed that it came down to fourth and goal on the one yard line to win the Super Bowl, to make such a critical decision. Moving forward, we have to be better than this. And I understand what Dr. Gruccio is saying, and Mr. Merkley, we all hashed it out. But this was no secret. We knew the type of money we had. And I understand that we weren't sure what would be happening with the different rule changes. But one thing that the Vineland Board of Education stresses, they want their kids back in schools. And I'll be darned, I'm going to be straight up on it. If I can get you back five days a week, I'd get you back five days a week. Why these numbers are low? Because our kids need to be educated. But in order to do that, if I'm understanding what we discussed in our executive session pretty thoroughly, this is going to give us the most instructional time for our students in a daily routine as we try to get back towards some type of normalcy. I easily could have voted no, but I've been around this district long enough to understand. to understand the excuse train. And at this time, we have no time for that train to be leaving the station because we need to be all hands on deck, not 157 opting out. We need all hands on the train to move forward, educating our students. So that's all I want to say about that.
Up to Santo.
Yes, Mr. English. Point of order, please.
Yes.
Before Mr. Merkley declares the vote five, three, one is passed, I don't have my book with me at home. As the boards are aware, various votes are needed for various issues. I don't recall if the vote for an emergent item requires a super majority of six. Jean, do you happen to know?
I don't know with 99% accuracy, but I don't believe it is. It's normally centered around personnel. I don't believe it's a majority.
Well, what I'd like to do is Jean can declare the vote five, three, one, and at nine o'clock tomorrow morning, I will notify him with respect to whether or not that carries, and the board will be also notified. I apologize for not having my reference available right now, but it is a point that I needed to raise. Jean, the vote is five, three, and one abstention?
That is correct. Correct.
And I'm not happy. Again, just not happy. Not a happy board president today. I guess that puts us to number two.
Item two, approval regarding resolution of emergency number two for emergency award of COVID-19 school facility sanitation service contract in accordance with NJSA eighteen A, eighteen A dash seven and Governor Murphy's executive order one oh three to hold in disinfectant service of Marlton, an amount of 19,898 per service, not to exceed 159,184.
Okay. We have some discussion. Questions, comments?
I have a question. When we were discussing it, we could make it on a month-to-month basis, correct? We don't have to do it every month?
Per service.
Per service, okay, per service, which is a 30-day service, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Will call please.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
This is Cottis Body.
I'm going to vote yes with this because it's with the understanding that it's going to be per service as needed. But I do agree with the spraying of the schools for sanitation for the 30-day period.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
That motion passes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Merkley. Do we have any older new business? Seeing none. Board member remarks. Usually I start with one way and I work my way over, but I'd like to speak first this evening. Spoke a lot this evening, but I just want to talk tonight a little bit about just a disappointment that I currently have with things going on in the city of Vineland concerning educating our students. These are times here in Vineland, the state of New Jersey, the country, and the world that we've never, ever faced. And if I may steal a line from Coach Russo, he likes to say, we rise as one. So here we are, a district trying to get back to some type of normalcy, and we continue to hit speed bumps. I respect the First Amendment. Everyone has the right to say what they want to say, but I'm just so disappointed by some of the comments that were directed towards myself and my fellow board members. My fellow board members, they're big girls and boys. They can fight for themselves, but as their president, I try to take the bullet for them as much as I can because I don't know who in their right mind would question a board member having a drink or having some crackers after working an eight, 10, or 12-hour day and being in the middle of a four-hour meeting. That's what the public watching a meeting is focusing on? I mean, give me a break. I'm just so disappointed because I pride myself on doing the homework and bringing 100% to every meeting, and I have to hear words like guinea pig and words that just, there's a time and place for that, but it's not in the form that it was being used. Because anybody that knows me or my fellow board members know what we are all about, what we represent. To read things like vote them out, I had to start questioning the type of people that I'm continuing to fight for, week in, day in, month in, and out, because it just, it just let me down. And, you know, if the shoe fits where, I don't want to call anybody's name out. The people that had a lot to say, you should be embarrassed. And to use the word disappointment, I try and finish every meeting with positive stuff. We're getting ready to open schools, and our heads aren't in the game. And when I need people to bring their A-game, it's just disheartening to know that I'm getting an F-minus at best sometimes with some people. And social media is a double-edged sword. Once you say it, I taught this to my kids a long time ago, you can't take it back. You might try to hit delete, but trust me, somebody took a screenshot and somebody sent it. So yeah, I'm not sulking. You definitely got my attention. And we're put here by the taxpayer. And you know what? You saw from a previous vote, it's not the easiest thing to do. But I can damn well tell you that the decisions that were made by each of us tonight, it's not personal. We'll talk to each other tomorrow. It's no why didn't you do this, or why didn't you do that. It's always decisions that are based on what we believe is the best thing for the Vineland Public School District moving forward when it comes to educating our students. And now we have this beast called safety. Well, you know, it's really no different than when we had safety discussion about how safe our schools are with an armed guard or not an armed guard. If someone was to ask me today, are our schools as safe as possible? I'm always going to say, we could always make them a little bit safer. Many people are saying, can you guarantee my child's safety, my niece, my nephew, my grandchild? No, we can't guarantee anybody's safety in anything we do. God forbid something bad can happen walking to the bus, getting off the bus while you're in school. Nothing that we can control there. I wanted the public to know that I truly believe that we are better than this. We're going to overcome something like this, but it's not going to be at body blows and jabs. It's going to be by rising as one. Lick your wounds. Say you didn't like the decision that was been made, but don't hide behind something that is a social media post. You guys all know how to find me. I'm pretty easy to find, but my fellow board members, they don't deserve that kind of treatment. And I would hope in future postings, you kind of think before you post, because our youth is out there in a social media world, thriving and reading all this type of things. And they feed off what we as adults continue to see. So I apologize for the negativity, but again, when I use the word disappointment, I can't stress it enough. I'm disappointed in many areas, and we've got to be better, or we will let this thing called COVID-19 destroy us. And that's exactly what a disease and a pandemic like this will do. We need to stick together and continue to push forward. And that is all I have. So at this time, I will start to my right with Mr. Fiocchi.
Thank you. Just two quick comments. First, Mr. English, thank you. Very well said. And I also want to thank Dr. Grucci and her team. I know they've worked tirelessly night and day to get us ready for September. So I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiocchi. Mr. Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. English, for your support and words. You, I couldn't have said it better. Dr. Grucci, thank you for the time that you and your staff, everyone has put in to this plan, everything that we're doing. The main focus is educating students and the quality of education that we're going to put out there. How we do that, it might be up for debate. But like Mr. English said, we're all adults. We can have these conversations and these debates and still speak to each other after that's over with. We all have to get our head in the game and really come together, not so that you can say something to insult the other person, but to come out on top and really be there for students and these parents that will need us in September, whether we do virtual, whether we do in-person. There's going to be kids that need consistency. They're going to need all of our staff. They're going to need all of us to really be rooting for them so that they can succeed this school year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Ms. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. English. And again, I'll echo my fellow board members' words. I do appreciate your support. Sometimes it is difficult making decisions that impact the lives of individuals, but I am a strong believer that every board member here really weighs very heavily on them to ensure that they're making the best decision for, particularly for our children. I would like to thank Dr. Grucci and her staff. I went over her plan, the revised plan, and I have to say, it is very, very extensive. It really covers details that I hadn't even thought about. So I want to thank her, the entire committee that worked on this plan tirelessly to ensure that everything was considered, that particularly that the students' health and safety, the teachers' health and safety, all staff members' health and safety are taken into consideration. I know we still have a lot of work to do. I know, you know, in talking to parents, some parents have chosen, you know, they want to keep their children home, and I certainly respect that. But then other parents have chosen to send their children to school because they feel that it's important and that their children need that in-person support and that in-person instruction to be able to thrive. And for those children, you know, we are taking that responsibility extremely seriously. And I do believe that Dr. Grucci's plan ensures that we have done what we can do within our powers to ensure that we, all staff and students will be as safe as possible, and all guidelines will be followed. So, you know, I wish everyone well. Looking forward to this new coming year. I know it's going to be different, and we're going to be faced with challenges, but I really do believe that if we all work together, we can accomplish great things. So I'm going to stay focused on getting us past that start line and then past the finish line. So thank you very much. You know, and I wish everyone well. Stay safe.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Spinelli.
Hi. So first and foremost, after reviewing Mary's plan, there's no one-size-fits-all for this. And I have debated this, you know, with my own family, with people out in the community, and I'm confident that we made the right decision. And I'm confident that the Vineland Board of Education, everybody's going to have their part, and they're going to do it well. And we're going to get through this. But we need to stay positive, and we need to stick together as a community and support one another. I do think the negativity, you know, it's like cancer. It attacks everyone, and it kind of is the trickle effect. And I do appreciate everything that Scott had to say tonight with supporting everyone. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spinelli. Okay, Ms. Costa. I'm sorry, no, Ms. Cottis Body. There you are. I'm thinking left, right. There you go, Ms. Cottis Body.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Grucci and her team for coming up with this revised plan. I read it, and I read through it again, and I, you know, and I'm really happy with what I see. I know they've put in so much time and hard work to do the best for what we all feel is best for our students and our staff. Mr. English, I have to thank you for your words. Reading a lot of those comments hit a little too close to home for me. When I read, you know, because we might have gone off screen, or we had something to drink, or like you said, something to eat, you know, that's like really bad. What people don't understand is, we all work. We work long hours. I got home five minutes before the meeting started, and I didn't have time to do anything else. So if we wanted to drink of water, I apologize if that insulted anybody. But then to read comments that we were sending people to their deaths because we were voting for virtual, for sending kids back to school, I'm going to tell you, I was offended and I was hurt. I cried a lot that night. Because I love this district, and we, as board members, we all have our hearts into it. And I think it's really unfair that those comments were made. And you're right, they should be ashamed of themselves for making them. I've talked to many teachers, many administrators, many parents. And however they decide to send their children to school, it's best for them. And that's what it is. The kids, the kids need a good education. And that's what we're trying to do. We don't always agree. We always find that out. But when push comes to shove, we all stand together. And from sitting on my, this is my fourth year on the board, this is probably the best group of people I've actually served with. We all have different opinions, but we're all open-minded, and we all listen to each other. So to the board, I thank you for being there and for everybody putting any kind of input in. So I wish everyone well this year. I hope that we can get through this without any more problems. But we're all here for the public and the students. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cottis Body. Mr. Sabrana?
One of the things about this country that makes it great is also, one of the things about it that's disappointing is that people have the right to be critical, to be judgmental, to be sarcastic, and to take issue with people that are serving in the public interest for free because they want to see the best education for every student in our town. And people are working very hard. Like Dr. Grucci and her team. And even though we don't always agree on everything, I respect the fact that she worked very, very hard to get another plan together in a very short period of time. And it's not going to be perfect, and not everybody's going to like it, but it's the best we can do under circumstances no one could ever have imagined six months ago. This is an unprecedented crisis in this country. And unfortunately, there's no book to go look everything up. So we have to just feel our way along one step at a time. None of us, none of us want a student, a staff member, a support person, a bus driver, anyone to be at risk. want a student, a staff member, a support person, a bus driver, anyone to be at risk. I, I would not, I know there's no one sitting here tonight at wherever you're sitting that would want to have this on their conscience. I certainly don't. But I also am not going to live in fear and I, I'm not going to be bullied or badgered into having an in-person meeting if that's not only going to be logistically problematic, but it may even put some people at risk that wouldn't be otherwise. We're going to do what we have to do. I appreciate your support, Scott, as always. And I hope that there is going to be a demonstrably effective vaccine available in a very short period of time. I don't think it's going to be five minutes from now, but I think, I, I'm hopeful that it's going to be early in 2021 and we can go back to something like what life used to be like because it's been difficult and it's been stressful on all of us in incredible ways. And I know, I know personally that you just feel differently and you can just tell when you're out and about and when you talk to people and what, and when you see some of these social media posts, that there's a sense of frustration and, and anger and upset out there in the land from the situation that we put in through no fault of anyone. And we're talking about a hundred and sixty thousand people that have died. And that's not, that's a serious, serious matter. And I wish that I could make it go away because I would. Unfortunately, I can't. So we'll just keep going along the best we can and hopefully it'll, it will be over soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabrana. Mr. Silva?
Yes, Scott, just want to thank you for your support. Echo all the other board members. I'd like to thank Dr. Grucci and her team. I know exactly the type of work that we've been to plan like that together. Firsthand, I'm doing that in my current job right now. It's a lot of work, a lot of long hours, a lot of racing and rewriting, but I just want to thank you for the work that's been you and your team put in to get this done. Like Megan said, there's no one-size-fits-all in education. We're just going to do the best that we can for violent students and our teachers. Keep them safe and educated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. My good friend, Mr. Ulrich?
Thanks, Scott. I'd just like to thank Scott. I mean, you know, he is, he's a stand-up guy. When the chips were down for me fifteen years ago. Dr. Grucci. Was that for me? I carry a prayer card that she gave me. And I might disagree with her. We might argue, argue our points to the nth degree, but in the end, it's about relationships and I've earned that trust with her to know that when it's done that conversation, it's over. There is no bitterness. There is no anything going along that lines. I really could care less what people post on social media. Has no effect on me. I don't live in fear. I don't think we should make decisions, important decisions in all of our lives, financial decisions based upon fear. We should always look forward, look at all the facts. As Mary says to me at times, she'll prey on it. That's what she does. That's her mechanism to come to important decisions. We just have to make important decisions. We don't always agree. Matter of fact, if we all agree and we have that mindset, that group think, it's useless. We need to innovate. We need to be better than we are. We need to reimagine what our educations, educational system can be. And throwing money at the, at, at, at the process is not always the answer. Because we can innovate, we can be creative, we can get cooperation from our collective bargaining units. We can have people be in this, as everybody said, together, to rise up. This all affects everybody in a certain particular way. I know that I have a daily conversation with my family about the risk of COVID-19. I talk to my grandkids. I, sometimes I'll joke around if, if, if there was a group of people over the house and I'll quiz them on symptoms and stuff like that. Yeah, I'm making light of the situation at that moment, but they know that for me personally, I take that serious. I take it to heart. I refuse to live life in fear. I am going to take risks to protect my life. Like Kim and other people. So I would say that in the end, they've all worked extremely hard to come up with a plan. No plan is perfect. We won't be able to mitigate risk to zero. Our true measure will be how do we respond through that diversity? Not how we act when the times are good, when the decisions are easy and everything is floating along, but we should look at how we can rise up in this situation and make our decisions on what we think is the right thing at the moment. And that's about it. You know, everybody else really said it well. Thanks, Scott, and thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Ulrich. Dr. Grucci?
Well, I guess the one thing we can definitely agree upon is that we're all here for kids. That's our purpose. We all are passionate about doing what's right for our children and the students in the Vineland District. And no, we don't always agree. I, I want to thank the board that, for supporting the two emergent items tonight because I, I, I want you to realize we're not trying to keep you in the dark on anything. And I realize they were last minute, but I have to thank my team. We have, they work so hard every day. We didn't have an opportunity to view this equipment until this past week. And sometimes that's just the way it is. So I try my best to keep the board in the loop as much as I can. Sometimes we just can't. It's last minute. And I, I thank you for at least believing in us and the job we're here to do and I appreciate that very much. I want to thank my team because they're just amazing and we have truly been working twelve-hour days, trying to do what's right, trying to get this plan done, trying to get state approval. And I, I really believe when it comes down to it that we have good people in our district, our teachers, our staff, all of them. I think they care. I think that's why they're in this profession. I think they care about our kids and I truly believe that they're going to step up to the plate and do everything they can to do what's right by our kids, provide the best instruction they can, be it virtual or in-person. And I just believe in them. I think when times are tough, they're going to do what needs to be done. And I can't say enough about our staff. I hope I'm not wrong, but I believe in, in them and I think they showed that when we went to virtual without any notice and I think they've gotten better at it. We're providing professional development and we're here to help. Anybody who needs the help, we're here. And I just want to thank them for their dedication. Thank my team and thank all of you because I know we're all here for the same reason. So thank you very much.
Hey, Scott, one thing I forgot to bring forward. I had a, a couple of parents that contacted me and I told them I'd get back to them. It was about having eligibility to, if, if we're doing fall sports and they have a high score that if they were virtual, could they play the high school sport? And I checked with Dr. Rossi with his association. He wasn't sure about that. So if it's something that Dr. Grucci can research, I'd appreciate that. So you just get back to that inquiry.
No problem. We'll check it out in the morning.
Thank you, Tom and Dr. Grucci. Thank you as well. Just pretty much, guys, when I came back to the board, one thing I've always asked for was for my fellow board members to give the same effort that I like to give and I, I preach it till I'm blue in the face to communicate, to collaborate and to be transparent. And I, I'm pretty hard because I'd like to grade each one of us monthly to make sure we're, you know, where I think we need to be. And I've been around the game a long time and the last, the last two meetings and Tom, you tell me if I'm right or wrong, were probably two of the best Vineland Board of Education meetings when it came time to communicate, be transparent and be collaborative in a long time. And you said it really well. If we were nine-nothing across the board all the time and we're not but a bunch of rubber stampers. No, we, we speak from the heart and we speak passionately and we believe what we believe in. I thank each one of you again tonight as well as the central administration team because, you know, I'm, I'm hard on you guys just as much. I had to be a swing vote tonight for a very intense topic, but I'll, I'll put my head on the pillow tonight and I'll sleep well because I feel that is what was best. I ask each of you to just continue to stay well and be safe the rest of this summer. Hopefully we will be in a, a face-to-face type setting on the twenty-sixth of August and I just want to say thank you to everyone out there in the public because again, we're here because you put us here and we might not make you happy, like I said all the time, but trust me, it's not easy sitting in these seats and I would say if you've got the courage, pick up a petition next June because everyone deserves a shot at the title. With that being said, do I have a motion for adjournment this evening? Thank you and good night.
Good night.